I'd like to call to order the Harrison County Board of Education and welcome you all this evening. First item on the agenda is Cadet James Daly, who's going to lead us in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. This is our second month of presentation of Hilltop Nation. Good news from across the district. Mr. Donald Ritchie and his students present this. And last month, it was exciting, our first month. So I'm excited to see it roll.
Good evening and welcome to the HC Nation, your monthly magazine for good news. We're starting tonight's show with great news from HCHS. Here is Senior Alex Beam with the scoop.
Hey guys, it's Alex Beam here with HCHS Phillies Wrestling Coach Josh Ashbrook. The Phillies recently wrapped the season up with a state championship. Coach Ashbrook, can you give everyone the details?
Sure. It was a great year. We finished with seven state placers, three state finalists, actually four state finalists, and Desiree Cuvee, Jenny Fortner, Leila Davis won her second state title, and Kirsten Griggs finished as a state runner-up. She is now a three-time state placer as well. Seniors were losing. Peyton Slade, Jalen Mitchell, and Katherine Lamb, those are three big contributors that we're going to miss. Multiple state placers in that lineup. But overall, very pleased with how we finished up the year. We didn't get to compete a lot this year. So it was great to have all those girls out there competing and fighting and just putting on for Harrison County. We finished with, I think, 29 girls competing with seven state placers. And that was enough to win, bring home the state title. So it was really cool to do that. It was a collective effort. Everybody put points on the board. So it was great to see our girls finish strong. And now we got to reload and prepare to win another state title next year and keep the dynasty alive. So that's the plan. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Coach Ashbrook. Now back to the studio.
Thanks, Alex. Continuing on with HCHS sports, congratulations to the Thorabreds basketball team. They won the 38th District Basketball Tournament, 70 to 45, over Robertson County on February 25th. Great job, Breds. Next up, we have HCHS Senior Demi Lemons with news out of Eastside Elementary School and the academic team. To you, Demi.
Hi, I'm here today with part of the Eastside Elementary School Academic Team, and I will allow them all to introduce themselves.
My name is Patty Cummins, and I am the coach along with Sarah Hoskins of the Eastside Academic Team.
Hi, I'm Isaac Powers. I am a written assessment taker of math and social studies, and I am the captain of the Quick Recall Team.
Hi, my name is Reese Trimble, and I'm on the FPS team. And Ms. Patty and Ms. Hoskins, they've taught me a lot. And when Ms. Patty walked up to me that first day, she asked me if I wanted to be in FPS. And I was really excited, and I told her yes. And how far we've come, it's just such a blessing to have them.
When I started a year ago on academic team, and I was the only fourth grader who did it that year. I was part of the Quick Recall Team that year too. And I feel so glad that I get to come back this year and do some more, represent my school, and show them how good I am and how I'm going to accomplish major things in the future.
FPS was really challenging for me, and I like challenging things. When we went into district, it was kind of easy. And Ms. Patty told us that in the start, it would be really hard. But when we got into regionals, it was really simple to do. And it's just really good to have Ms. Patty to teach us because she's a really good coach to me and all my friends that are on the FPS team. Me and Isaac are just so grateful to have all these teachers that have taught us all these years. And we're just really thankful to have this opportunity, and thank you for letting us talk to you. Bye.
Alrighty, and recently, Eastside Elementary Academic Team went to regionals. And I will let them explain that to you.
Our team consists of students who take tests, students who are on the Quick Recall Team, and students who are on the Future Problem Solving Team. We competed at district. Each person who takes an academic test, if they place in the top five, our team gets points for that. If our Quick Recall Team places in the top four, they get points, and the top two teams move on to regional. And then our Quick Recall Team and our Future Problem Solving Team both came in first in district, so they both moved on to regional. In regional, Isaac placed second in social studies, which there were about 20 schools. So that was a really grand accomplishment. And our Future Problem Solving Team got first place. So with those points all added together, we came in fourth overall at regional. And we also, and this is something we are so proud of, Ms. Hoskins and I, our team received the Hume Award, which is the sportsmanship award. And all the teams vote on that themselves. So it's a real honor to get that award.
Well, that's very nice, and congratulations to all of you. It's nice to see all your awards, and I'm sure everybody's very proud of you. So go Eastside. I'll send it back to you.
Hi, I'm Harrison County Speech Team Member Cameron Jones. And this past weekend, the speech team competed at Kissel, the Kentucky State Speech Tournament. My teammate Kathleen Clark semifinaled in pros, and myself and Demi Lemons quarterfinalled in broadcasting. It was a great experience, and I was so happy to be back competing. So I hope to see the Harrison County Speech Team alive and thriving in the 2022 and 2023 school year.
Hi, I'm Major John Montgomery. I'm one of the ROTC instructors here at the high school and the rifle coach. I just wanted to talk to you today about how proud I am of these guys. This is my Team One that just finished 16th in the world for Air Force ROTC teams. The competition is really amazing. They start out worldwide. Everybody sends in their scores electronically. And we made the cut when we did that to get invited to a regional match in Ohio, where these guys did great, and we actually ended up finishing 16th in the world that way. And just super proud of them. Our program is designed to teach the cadets about rifle safety, also help them with their competitive spirit, give them an avenue to exercise that competition. And also, we wanted to help them with their concentration skills, focus, and that type of thing. And they've done tremendously this year. I'm Major John Montgomery.
Hi, I'm Donald Eckler, Cadet First Lieutenant from 12th grade.
Hi, I'm Ayanna Hoag. I'm a Cadet Airman First Class, and I'm a freshman.
Hi, I'm Cadet Fraser Daly. I'm a major and a junior.
I am Cadet Matthew Taylor. I'm a major, and I'm 11th grade.
All right. Thank you so much for letting us talk to you today. I just wanted to tell you about the success this team had this year. We just finished a worldwide Air Force J Rossi National Championship match, where the team finished 16th out of 106 teams. They did great this year. Super proud of them. They met the goals that the program has for them, which is to give them an avenue to exercise their competitive juices, if you will, also teaching them about rifle safety. In addition, exercising the character skills that you need to perform well at this sport, which is specifically self-control and concentration. They did a marvelous job this year.
I'm Matthew Taylor. Talking about successes with the rifle program and ROTC. We had a really good run this year. We had six matches this year, and locally, we were currently undefeated, which is very proud of this team, very proud of everything that's going on this year. And I can't wait till next year to go on.
I really enjoy working with all the, our marksmanship team, one-on-one, and being able to get to know them and actually work on how they perform.
I'd like to talk about one of our competitions. It was Russell County. We had a whole lot of fun there. It was another Air Force school that we got to shoot against. We had a lot of fun, got to connect with them well. We got to have a lot of fun shooting against them. It's good competition.
Something that I really like about the marksmanship team is when we do things other than shoot at targets, like when we shoot at cards and other stuff. One time, we shot them and, well, like that, went right through it. And it's really fun.
While moving along with the theme of cadets, we're going to be next Master Sergeant Fortner. Cadets of the term, this is always a special event.
Well, Board members, Dr. Birch, thank you again for allowing us to come out. And, you know, it's very important, I think, for us to come out and recognize some of these students that are working so hard to, you know, to be the next stage leaders in our community. And we have a lot of those in ROTC. So every term, we try to recognize, you know, one from each class, from freshmen all to juniors, that show those innate qualities that we're looking for of leadership. And we got some great cadets today. We'll start off with Ms. Ayanna Hoag. Come on up. You probably saw her in the videos. So she is, she's a freshman and one of her very best. She's actually on the air rifle team. And believe it or not, you know, our air rifle team is nationally competitive every year. We won the state, or seconded the state the last four years. And you think coming onto a team like that, that'd be very intimidating and daunting. But believe it or not, statistically, over the whole year, as a freshman, she is our top shooter. So, and we tell, you know, every year when we recruit, we tell these, the guys, you know, ladies are the better shooters, because lots of times, these guys used to shoot squirrels in their backyard, and they're like, I got this. And they're hard to teach sometimes because their subconscious habits. But she's extremely teachable, very humble, extremely a hard worker. Comes in every day with a, you know, a smile on her face and, you know, and sets the tone for the classroom, for the other students, what they can do, what they could achieve behavior-wise. And, you know, does everything we ask of her. And, you know, of all the cadets we've had, Major says she's the most teachable cadet he's ever had. So everything she, you know, he teaches, he gives her, she takes it in spades and runs with it, right? And so she's done a lot of community service. Her grades are real well. But it's, again, it's those innate abilities or other qualities that really separate her from her peers. So, Ms. Hoag, congratulations.
Here, we want to get a picture of this. If you'll step in front of the podium so he can...
Oh, come on.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry. Sorry, sorry. Congratulations.
All right. So another cadet you saw in the video as well, Cadet Daly. Come on up, Cadet Daly. He is our top junior of the term. He is one of our flight, he does a little bit of everything. He's one of our flight commanders. He's our vice commander for our color guard team. He just started coming out for Raiders, so we got two Raider meets coming up this Saturday and next Saturday. I think one of them's actually on the agenda for approval. And so he's on the Raider team. He's on the air rifle team. I mean, if you name whatever type of, you know, program we have or an activity we have, he is part of. He did 48 hours of community service. And above all that, he has a really great attitude, shows a lot of maturity for his age. And he's always like craving to learn more. So that's the thing we look for, is we could teach them enough where we could step back, that they innately ask for more without being given to them. And he does, he does a very, very, very good job of that. And so congratulations. Am I next as well? I think I'm next.
Yes.
Okay. So I'd like to request approval for a trip for our Raider team. We give our schedule usually at the beginning of the year, and we had a, one of our events actually got canceled for reasons at the high school that was hosting it. And so I tried to give the cadets another opportunity to compete on that weekend. And it's a little bit further away. This school is up, it's Wayne, Wayne High School up in Huber Heights, Ohio. So it's about a two-hour and 20-minute drive from here. But I would drive the bus, and there's really no additional cost other than the transportation costs that would go up there. But it's just to replace a Raider meet that was already on their schedule that got canceled. And it would actually be next, if approved, it would be next Saturday. Take any questions if anyone has any.
Any questions or comments? Motion may be Mr. Taylor. Do I hear second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Sparks. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you guys so much. I really appreciate it. Good night.
Congratulations, cadets. Thank you all. Oh, that you all shot those?
Yeah. My personal card, yes.
Oh, my gosh. That's crazy.
Oh, my goodness. I thought they said cars.
Thank you all. Thanks for sharing your cards. Oh, that's so sweet. Okay. Next item on the agenda this evening is consideration to grant approval for the field trip for Eastside's fifth-grade class. Mr. Kenny, welcome.
Welcome again. Thank you very much.
It's been three years, I guess, since I've been here. We didn't get to make the field trip the last two years. But all of you all, you know why I'm here. Austin, this is new for you, but fifth graders at Eastside. I won't be there for Cooper in a couple of years, but...
Oh, you might be.
Not planning on it, but...
Don't be hanging it up yet.
But anyway, it's the time of the year where we've, we've done this for 15, 20 years. But we'll take a field trip on April 28th and head up to Cincinnati, go across the bridge, that's why I'm here. And we will go to the Freedom Center, the Underground Railroad Museum, for a 10 o'clock, 10:15 tour. Self-guided now. The first few years, we had a tour guide. Now we're just doing it ourselves. But it's an unbelievable experience. If you've never been up there, you need to go to that location. And then we'll spend about 90 minutes there, and then make about the seven or eight-minute walk over to Great American Ballpark and watch the Reds take on the San Diego Padres for a 1235 Businessman Special, and get back after school, about 5:30, 6 o'clock. So all funds will be for Butterbraids. Through Butterbraids, we're selling those right now. And PTC will help out as well. Speaking of PTC, we've got a pancake breakfast out at Eastside. Shout out, Ms. Miles. But this Saturday morning for a fundraiser for PTC programs.
If you're an Eastsider, this is a big deal.
It's huge. It's unfortunate the last two years that, you know, those fifth graders didn't get the opportunity to go. That's one thing that they've missed out on, and a lot of kids are missing out on things. But that's, that's one thing that kids in kindergarten through fourth grade, they see, you know, those fifth graders going to the Cincinnati Field Trip. And so those, those last two groups, unfortunately, didn't get to go. But, you know, we're back, back here again, so...
Well, that's great.
Glad to see you back.
It's baseball, so he's coming.
We don't, for the Underground Railroad, we don't, we don't allow parents to come, but we tell them Section 532 is where we get our tickets every year. And so it's, it's up there, but it's not tippy-top, but it's pretty, pretty close to the top. And parents can come to that. But kids ride up with us, and they ride back with us. We don't, we don't let kids ride home with, with the parents and stuff. So I guess I'm seeking approval to cross the river.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Not a question, but a comment. I just want to thank you for spearheading this so many years ago and being in charge of it. It does mean so much.
There's a lot of folk in this room who, whose children have got to experience this field trip, so...
Well, I always have to share this. Jonna was in Mr. Kenny's First Class at Eastside. And that seems like 100 years ago, but it really wasn't. So if there are no further questions or comments, do I hear motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Motion may be Ms. Hatterick?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brunker. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion approved, and have a great trip.
Thank you very much. And if we didn't get passed, then two principals' children...
Couldn't get to go.
They would not have been very...
Yeah, that'd have been bad.
Thank you. Thank you once again.
Okay. Next item on the agenda this evening is FBLA trip. Mr. Branick, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm batting 500 for my two getting to go on that trip. My son got the, he wasn't able to go. He's a sixth grader this year, so... But my daughter had a big time while she was there. So here tonight to get approval to go to Ohio, Sharonville, Ohio, FBLA. Ms. Florence is taking three sophomores and a junior to an ethics. It's more of a camp than anything. The nice thing is, is the company is willing to pay for the teacher's sub and transportation costs. So we're really looking forward to her. I know it's a small group. Maybe it'll grow next year, and it might be something that we continue to do in the future. I think this is maybe the first time that she's taken this group up.
Great.
Any questions?
Questions or comments? Do I hear a motion for approval?
So move.
Motion may be Ms. Brunker?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you so much. And then we're going to go on and do the emergency miscellaneous item. Consideration to grant approval for an overnight trip, April the 13th through the 16th, for seven HC ATC students.
Yes, so that's a Skills USA competition. It's a, the state competition. We just recently had regions back in March, so we've got actually nine students going total. One of them's from another district, the other student's a homeschool student, so that's kind of unique to this situation. But the other seven are Harrison County students, and they're going to be doing industry-type of applications, welding. There's some tooling applications that students will be able to do. So the conference is actually at the Crown Plaza in Louisville. But some of the competitions are going to be held in E-Town. So, and this is not unique. This was unique to me, but was not unique to my staff or my advisors in regard. So they'll use Miller Transportation, and they'll bus those students. I think it's basically have larger facilities there in order to be able to conduct some of those competitions that they have. So they will go on the 13th, which is a Wednesday afternoon after school, and they'll return on Saturday. I'm planning on driving that bus up and back both ways.
Okay.
Yeah, and I appreciate you guys' willingness to be able to look at that today. Thank you all very much.
Any questions or comments?
Move approval.
Motion may be Mr. Taylor?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hatterick. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
Competition next week.
Enjoy your first Skills USA state competition. It's a lot of fun.
Have you done that before?
Oh, yes. State and nationals.
Okay. Next item on the agenda this evening is a consideration to grant approval of consent items, which include board minutes and fundraisers. Any questions or comments? You all have had this for your review.
Move approval.
Motion may be Ms. Brunker?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is consideration to grant approval of the March 2022 financial reports, which include board, school activity, and booster accounts, and the paid warrant. Any questions or comments after your review?
Move approval.
Motion may be Mr. Taylor?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hatterick. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Mr. Schweitzer? Good evening. How are you?
I'm very good. Thank you.
Surplus items.
Yes, ma'am. I am asking, my first item, I am asking for permission to conduct a surplus auction and to declare the list that hopefully is attached to or in your packets as surplus, and those items, of course, be sold in the surplus auction. I don't have a date yet, but when I do, I'll be sure to share that. You may want to stop by and, you know, feel free to bid on...
And shop?
And shop, yeah.
If it involves shopping, I'll stop by.
Yes. I will say that I'll probably come back in the month of April. I'll have an additional list. There will be more items, so...
I didn't notice this time. There's no buses on this one yet.
Not yet. We do have, we actually, I talked to Mr. Blackburn, we actually have two buses.
Oh, okay.
But I think one of those may have already been declared surplus, so... But anyway, yes.
Yeah, okay. Great. Well, as I was reading over the list, I was like, who buys this stuff? I need to come and see who comes. Yeah, okay.
I mean, it's...
I got it.
That's the reason I noted no buses, because for some reason, that always seemed to be a draw, you know? I don't know why anybody wants a ragged-out old-school bus, but they sell.
Ask Larry Kendall.
All right, moving along. Do I hear a motion to grant approval of this list of surplus items and to conduct an auction?
So move.
So move by Ms. Hatterick?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Let's move right along. So next item, this is exciting. Let's discuss this BG-1.
Yes, ma'am. Almost makes me a little bit nervous. Well, it's a very large sum of money.
It makes me a little fearful that it's happening.
Yes, I'm excited about that, though. I'm asking for your consideration to grant approval of a BG-1 in the total amount of $9,500,000 for Phase 1 of a new phased Harrison County High School, BG number 22-392. Phase 1 will include site development, site access, site utilities, and a building pad.
Music to my ears.
I know. Any questions or comments?
It's been a long time coming, but move approval.
I am going to shed a little tear here.
I know.
Okay. Motion has been made by Mr. Taylor?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hatterick. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries.
And just so that you know, and it may actually be up there, Phase 2 would actually include, or would include, the construction of the actual high school, which is 160,000-plus square feet. And then Phase 3 would include extracurricular and athletic facilities. So that's the plan.
That's the plan.
Okay.
Harrison Hilltop. Okay, next item on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Asking for your approval to advertise for architectural and engineering services for the development and construction of a new high school and area technology center. I did attach a copy of that advertisement. The advertisement would work, run, excuse me, would run for one week in the Cinthiana Democrat. It would be in the paper on March 31st. And of course, those one-page letters would be due back here, and because of spring break, would be April the 11th at noon.
Any questions or comments?
Move approval.
Motion may be Ms. Brunker?
Second.
Second by Mr. Taylor. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Fowler?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to ask for your approval for us to pursue the DIRGRANT. We do this every year. DIRGRANT goes to rural area high schools. Oddly enough, we are the furthest south of the schools that are able to apply for it. We've had a lot of success in the past. We have received everything from Chromebooks, Chromebook carts, to the GoPro-style cameras that are used in our culinary program, to more recently, the library received a new digital interactive board. But what you're looking at tonight is projector, classroom projectors. They are starting to go out frequently. They're about $400 a pop. The ones we have now, 15, 20 years old. Every individual bulb is about 100 bucks. Those bulbs average about 1,000 and max 2,000 hours of operation. We're looking to replace those with LED, large-size televisions, which have an average lifespan of over 100,000 hours. So it just seems like a long-term, better cost... better-cost-induced solution for us. Plus, it allows us to continue to control our instructional practices without just keeping the same old thing we've always used, as we hopefully move closer and closer to truly interactive screens in every classroom. But this is a first step for us to kind of get out from under that bulb replacement bandit, if you will.
Yeah. They were $25 for like an overhead projector. So every time I'd break one, the principal would tell me.
Yeah. And sadly, I was using the overhead projector during my days of instruction.
Yeah. One's for sale.
No.
I know.
That, that's okay. No nostalgia necessary.
Oh, Mr. Schweitzer, she knows what's for sale. She is coming. Okay. So do I hear a motion to grant approval for Harrison County High School to apply for a DIRGRANT in the amount of $15,000 to be used for technology?
Move to approve.
Motion may be Ms. Hatterick?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Oh, she is on hold tonight. Ms. Asher?
How are you all?
Very good.
The first item I had is a request to revise the summer school salary schedule and to change the elementary summer school coordinator position to $4,000 for a four-week session. And that is the same amount that we already had approved for middle and high. We're doing a four-week session this summer, and, and that rate of pay is more in line with what's going to be required of that person and the time that's going to be required.
Yes. Any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion to approve or revise summer school salary schedule?
Move to approve.
Motion may be Mr. Sparks?
Second.
Second by Mr. Taylor. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration to grant approval of the following board-paid, certified teaching positions for 2022-2023 school calendar.
Okay. You all know, you have, we have a staffing policy here at the district that you've approved that has a certain staff-to-student ratio. That's not changed. For the last several years, we at the district have been operating on 18, 19 numbers due to COVID. So we felt like, Dr. Burchett felt like that for this upcoming school year, we've tried to keep each of the schools, hold harmless status. Basically, we're going to get funded again on 18, 19 numbers. So we want them to have those same number of positions, even though we've got two schools that actually, when we, when we use the ratios, they've gone down in the number of staffing positions. But we want to ask the board for this coming year to pay for an additional one-and-a-half certified position at the middle school and a half position at Northside, so that they maintain the same number of staff and give everybody time to kind of maybe recover from COVID and get some of these students back in that, that are gone.
Any questions or comments?
Move approval.
Motion may be Ms. Brunker?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a consideration to grant approval of an agreement with Pepsi.
Okay. We had requested proposals from Pepsi and Coca-Cola. We did not get a proposal from Coca-Cola. They are not interested in doing a full-service vending. And that's not a requirement by the state, but it is a best practice that we have a company that fills our machines, empties our machines, takes care of the money, sends us reports. So we have a proposal from Pepsi that is, is not a bad deal. It's a little better than what we had last time. You know, I think the days of when these soft-drink companies used to spend big, big money at school districts is kind of over. But we do have one. It's a five-year agreement. It's $3,000 annually. The first year is for sure 3,000. Then every year after that, if we buy at least 1,200 cases of product, then they get us, they will give us $3,000. So, you know, the high school is generating probably 95% of what the sales are, maybe a little less. But we do take that 3,000, and they get a portion of it, the largest portion, but we do spread it to all schools. All schools get a little piece of it. And then also in the agreement, there's a 30% commission on anything that we sell out of the machines. And then we also get rebates on what we sell out of the concession stands. So we're asking for approval to, to sign this five-year agreement, and the attorney has looked over it.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Move approval.
Motion may be Mr. Taylor?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hatterick. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you so much.
All right.
Mr. Harris, consideration to grant approval of the, oh, gosh, this is 2022-2024?
Yes.
Technology plan.
Yes, seeking board approval, and you should have it in your packets of the 2022-2024 technology plan.
That seems like a long way away. But it's not. That's for sure. Any questions or comments for Mr. Harris?
Move approval.
Motion may be Ms. Brunker?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Burchett?
This is a second and final reading of an amendment to the personal leave. It adds the third personal day. It's policy 3.1231 and 3.2231 for both certified and classified. And I'd ask that the board approve that change to the leave policy.
Yes. Any questions or comments?
Move approval.
Motion may be Mr. Taylor?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hatterick. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Motion, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration to grant approval of the attached employee leave of absences. You've had that for your review. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion may be Ms. Hatterick?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brunker. All in favor, say yes, please?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is Dr. Burchett's superintendent report of personal actions, and that's in your folder for review. No action necessary. Next item is approval of emergency and miscellaneous. And we have one this evening. Ms. Hatter, consideration to grant approval of a fundraiser for the art club.
And I certainly appreciate you all considering this. You certainly did not have to, I think it was, basically came down to a lot of things, supply and demand and supply chain and, and the nature of the beast. So the art club, many years ago, one of our first Starry Nights sold roses for performers, which is of course getting kids used to. When you do a performance, you can purchase a rose from your family to give you at the end of the performance. And in bringing that back, you had to see if you could get roses. So we asked Ms. Waits literally at the ninth hour, because we had a meeting yesterday, and we realized we might be able to get them. And it's, we know we're asking last minute, and again, we are sorry for that. But that is on behalf of Ms. McFarland and the art club for Starry Night, and there, the proceeds will go to the art club of those flower sales.
Any questions or comments?
Move approval.
Motion may be Ms. Hatterick?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brunker. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you so much. And Starry Night will be here. That is going to be for everybody's reminder, April the 16th.
And at 6:30, because it's Easter weekend.
Oh, yes. Okay. Okay, next item is public comment. I don't believe we have anyone this evening. Do we need to go into, next item on the agenda is grant approval to convene an executive session in accordance with KRS 61.810, subsection 1, subsection C, discussion of proposed pending litigation.
So moved.
Motion made, motion made by Mr. Taylor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries.
No action anticipated.
No action anticipated.